Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, March 22. We are meeting as we have been now for a year via Zoom. You can pick up the Zoom links for this meeting as well as for any other board and commission meetings that we operate in the Village of Pleasantville at our website at Pleasantville-NY.gov. We encourage everybody to log in if they're interested in any item that's on our agenda. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast, a complete tape of all that went on, both in our work session as well as our regular session at PCTV76.org. So I have a bunch of announcements to make, but I will start by sharing my screen. And you know what I will do? I will start by introducing a guest we have tonight, which is County Executive George Latimer. Welcome, County Executive. Thank you for joining us here at our board meeting.
Thanks very much, Peter. I appreciate it. I know I was unscheduled a couple of days ago, so I'll be very quick so as not to add to your time so you can get home and do all the things you have to do. I did want to, as I did about six months ago and a year ago, give you a quick update of where we are with the COVID response and take whatever questions time allows for. And I'll let the mayor be the guide. And when the invisible hook comes out, it pulls me off the screen, and I'm good with that.
I don't know. You could be here a long time then, George.
Okay. The numbers we have as of today shows countywide that there are 5,335 active cases of COVID. That's, we devised that number from the total number positives year-to-date, which is 115, 935, and those that were here two weeks ago, 110,600. So on the presumption that it takes two weeks to work the virus out of your system, if you've tested positive within two weeks, then you're an active case, 5,335. That's been part of a diminution in circumstances that's gone on now for about seven weeks. And if you look back, I have some of the statistics from the last period of time. If you go back a month ago, a month ago today, Monday, the 22nd of February, we had 6,332 cases. So we're down 1,000 cases from where we were. And if you go back two months ago, when we really were spiking in January, January 22nd, we had 11,481 cases. So in the space of two months, we've gone from 11,481 down to 5,335. We're not out of it, but that's a good directional move. On the hospitalizations countywide, the last number we have is 256 people are hospitalized. In the aggregate across the county, if you go back again, those two months, it was 562. So a drop of half of the number of people that are hospitalized. It's still a significant number, though, when you compare it to where we were last summer, we got to a very low period of time. The numbers are still high. And in terms of fatality, in the aggregate, we've lost 2,171 individuals. That's 22 people in the last week, and that compares to about six, seven weeks ago, and we lost 65 people in the week. So the trend line numbers have been positive, but there's still a ways to go. The vaccination information is very important as well, because that's the other factor. And we didn't really have those in play if you go back to the first part of January. We vaccinated now over 175,000 vaccinations between our major four locations. The County Center, which has been up for over two months, the Yawkes Armory, which has been up for a little less than a month, and the two county clinics, one at the Community College in Mount Pleasant-Greenberg, and the other one over at downtown White Plains. Then if you count all of the various pharmacies and the hospital vaccinations, we have roughly about 30% of the county that has gotten at least one shot of vaccine, and those who have completed their vaccination totals about 14%. So as a percentage of the total, you know, we think we're doing pretty well for vaccination purposes now. The governor just today announced that those who are under the age of 60, as old as 50 and up to 60, is now, are now eligible. So starting tomorrow, that will open up a large cohort of people that have previously been unable to get the vaccine. As it stands now, I assume you know these things, but I'll just cover it again. The, the basic parameters have been by age, which started out at 75, now we're down to 50. So 50 and above is eligible. You're also eligible if you have at any age an underlying medical condition or comorbidity, and the state outlines some of those that, that apply. You know, applies certainly to things like COPD, if you're, if you have a compromised immune system because of treatments against cancer or AIDS or anything of that nature, HIV, and a host of other things that fall into that category, then you're eligible. It doesn't include things, you know, if you have, you know, a chronic bad back or other joint or muscular things, don't apply. But comorbidities are, open the door for a lot of people who are really sick, and those are the ones you want to have the vaccine. And then also those who work in a variety of occupations, which are seen as essential to the running of the society. It began with hospital workers, EMS workers, and then of course, traditional first responders, fire and police, and now has expanded to a host of different areas. If you work at a grocery store, if you're a taxi limousine driver, if you are a restaurant worker, there's a host of other occupations that are now eligible. And that's broadened the, you know, broadened the amount. The problem that we have on the vaccine side is still the supply. The demand is significant at this point, and the supply isn't adequate yet to satisfy. If it was, then everybody would be able to get a shot anywhere, and you know, all the percentage of people that want the shot would be able to get it in fairly short order. So there's still, you know, a bit of a, of a hunt that has to go on to find an available place to vaccine, even though we've added vaccination locations over the last couple of weeks. If any of you have been to the County Center going through that process, you know, that is state-run, but the county's a partner in it. The county runs the two clinics, and the state and the feds are on the one down in Yawkes, and then all of the different pharmacies do it. And then you're seeing some pop-ups or temporary vaccination locations that are coming up. They have been traditionally structured by the state, and they had one at Sleepy Hollow High School over the weekend, but they partner with a medical facility and with a community organization. And usually, it's a closed circle of people within that organization that get the vaccine. And to be candid with you, they're trying to make sure there's greater diversity in those that get the vaccines. They're reaching out to entities that have populations of people of color to try to make sure that they, that they get a higher percentage of vaccinations. The county has done two pop-ups when we get certain allocation, and it's kind of a complicated process by which the state determines who gets what and when. We ask every week for an allocation, we find out what we're going to get. Last week, we received allocations of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines, which are easier to do the temporary pop-ups with, because it's one shot, and you don't have to reset the whole thing up three or four weeks later. Generally, the two-dose situations are the ones that are going on in the major clinics and in the pharmacies, because they will be a continuing source of vaccination. So we did a couple of pop-ups, and we intend to do more, and we'll work obviously with, you know, with the village and the town around you to determine when and where that makes best sense. We also now are, have been launching our homebound vaccination program, and we really waited until we got the Johnson &amp; Johnson product. Once again, it's hard to vaccine, vaccinate a fair number of people in a short period of time when you're going into their house. So to do it with a one-shot J&amp;J made more sense than trying to do with a two-shot Moderna or Pfizer. So that started over the last week or two. But we've got a lot of homebound people around the county, it's going to take a while to get to all of them. And obviously, the village has been extremely helpful in identifying who those people are in Pleasantville, so we can try to reach them as efficiently as we can. We're working with Empress, the organization that has ambulance services for some of the communities, and they have people who are qualified EMS, who are qualified vaccinators, and, and they've been helping us do that. So hopefully, we'll be able to make some progress there. The governor's made some other changes, as you know. He really sets the rules for these things, opening up percentages of different types of businesses, more people that can go to a restaurant, people that, you know, can go out to public outdoor events and so forth. We're really expecting by the time we get to the end of the spring, we're going to have a much more open structure. It won't be fully normal by the end of spring, but June of this year should look a lot, a lot better than June of last year did. And we, we expect to have a summertime where we'll be able to do some of the outdoor activities that we had to cancel last year. One of them I mentioned, one of my updates is that we do intend to open Playland this year. It's going to be at a reduced capacity, reduced number of days, but still that we'll be able to do that and socially distanced and sanitized and all those kinds of things. And then by the fall, we're very hopeful that we'll start to look a lot more like normal. It won't be completely normal, but a lot more like it, and hopefully that will be helpful to all of us. Because I think we all feel the pressures of now a year of this, being endorsed primarily, having masks on, which is not our normal way of operating. But at least in this area of the country, we're trying to do the responsible thing. And you know, we got hit hard early. A lot of people died early, and as we were learning more about the disease, the royal we, we got to a point where now we started to learn from those experiences. We've had much better result. But with that, Mr. Mayor, you know, I just wanted to, I know I'm talking like a fast New Yorker, and I am, trying to cover as much ground as I can so that everybody can get a sense of it. And then if you'd like, if you'd like me to try to tackle any questions, I will. And then, you know, whatever, as I said, whenever you pull the plug.
All right. Move on to your agenda. Do folks have COVID questions? I had a couple of questions that veer off the COVID subject, but anything further on COVID?
Are you getting, Mr. County Executive, are you getting any briefings on the prevalence of variants and any effect on vaccination effectiveness in the county?
Well, we've heard so far, David, is that the UK variant has been present in the county. There have been no, no identifications yet of the other variants that, you know, with the contagious disease, it's probably only a matter of time. Apparently, the UK variant has been with us now for at least a month and a half, two months. And while it is more communicable in terms of the disease, it has not yet proven to be more severe in terms of hospitalizations or fatalities. You know, we hear, you know, read as layman, the same thing you hear and read about the Brazilian variant and some of these other ones, and our health professionals, you know, are trying to determine what is it that we would do differently and better if the, if the mutation appeared, you know, in our county? Because one of the most difficult things to do, we face this the whole pandemic, is you track numbers and you look at trends, but what do you do about them once you see the trend, you know? And, you know, we hand out more PPE and more hand sanitizer to people who are poor. We, you know, restrict certain types of activities in the public domain, but knowing that in the private domain, there's still actions that, you know, government isn't going to be able to or want to control, and so the virus still spreads. So I think the sense that we have is, is that if, if we see the outbreak and it becomes, you know, dramatic and draconian, then, you know, we would begin to close up certain things that are currently open. But we don't think we're at that point, and we're hopeful that what we're going to find out is, do the vaccines that we have now protect us equally well from the variants as they do from, you know, apparently whatever the main COVID is? We don't know that yet. We don't know how long the vaccination protection lasts for. We just haven't experienced it for long enough to know.
Thank you.
All right. Could I ask you to pivot a little bit? Lots of us in many of our communities in Westchester and around the country have been talking about a bias against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders based on the horrifying incident in Atlanta, and, and as we work through the police reform process about bias in general. You guys have launched a hashtag #SpeakUpWestchester?
We have.
Can you just touch on that a little bit?
Sure. I think one of the, and credit District Attorney Mimi Roca for taking leadership on this, because her, her office and responsibility is the appropriate one to prosecute hate crimes when they're investigated and determined to be hate crimes. One of the biggest things that we have to engender, and it's not just in the Asian-American community, but it is in certain minority communities, is the willingness to speak up, the willingness to report an incident, however large or small it is, and to do it to the appropriate authorities. You know, some folks will call the local police department in different parts of the county. They have more or less police assigned to do these things, and they may get more or less of a good response depending on the circumstances they're in. So what we're looking for now, Mimi has established a hotline number, I don't know if it's, it's live yet, but it should be shortly, in which people in the Asian-American community, and for that matter, any community, can call in a hate bias incident when they see it. If it's a swastika, if it's, you know, language that insults and offends, any of those things are fair game for the, for the hotline. And the ability to find the information immediately is what's essential for the prosecutors. They have to be able to know that the incident is identified on or about the time it happens so that, you know, witnesses could be identified and evidence can be taken at the time, and the local police would have to do that. But the bottom line is that, that is what the effort that's coming from a prosecutorial standpoint is. Our, our government, which includes the Rights Commission, which is an executive department function, is working at the same time with public education efforts. So we're working on some videos and printed material that will help try to deal with the issue from an education standpoint, reach out where we can, and try to have some positive impact on that side of the coin so that people get really sensitized to what represents a manifestation of hate. It's very difficult, you know, to identify, you know, perpetrators in advance and deter their action. If, if we can show that there is some sort of swift detection and swift prosecution, that may serve as a deterrent. And then of course, the general education reaches people who do things sort of thoughtlessly and mindlessly that are prejudicial, and they may not have the same degree of intent, but they advance the narrative of hatred. So those are the two prongs that we're working on.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Anybody have thoughts on that?
All right. I hope I put your board to sleep, Peter. I'm sorry if I did.
No, no, it's all right. I'm glad, we're glad to have you. I appreciate how much attention you've given Pleasantville, as I know you do it 44 of the times. It's quite remarkable. Here's the last one I'm going to toss your way. And as Albany stumbles its way towards a budget, it appears at least as though there is some cautious reason for optimism that we may not be harmed as much as we feared. Is that what you're reading?
It is. You know, the, the federal plan that President Biden put forward provided some direct relief to governments, county governments, town governments, village governments, but through the town structure, there's a formula yet to be announced and determined.
We're waiting on it.
Yeah. But, you know, the, the bottom line is that direct aid as well as going to the state. So where the state said at one point down, they thought they had a $14 billion gap, that number's been coming down in estimation. I heard the governor announced today that he identified $5 billion in revenue. I don't quite know how that happens. I served up there, and a lot of things are structured very differently there than they are at the village or the, of the county level in terms of transparency and knowing how things happen. But, but I would think that their budget gap is closed now, which is good news for all of us, because if that budget gap had continued right through the closure of the budget, there's no question they would have devolved costs down to us, and your budget and my budget would have gotten hit with additional costs that we didn't budget. Now you're, you know, going to be on the cusp of doing your budget now. We, we put ours to bed already, but neither of us can absorb additional costs that really aren't of our own making. But it doesn't, I don't think that's going to be necessary. Now, there's a political argument going on, and it's better addressed by Andre Stewart-Cousins and Tom Abinanti, and they come to visit. But that is, you know, the level of taxation at the state. Notwithstanding that, I know you've worked hard to try to keep taxes down in your jurisdiction, property taxes, which is what we control, and we have the last two years cut property taxes, not by a lot, but by a little bit. And, you know, we would like to do the same thing again this year. There is a, there is rhetoric in Albany that's in the other direction, so we'll have to wait and see what happens, what those revenue situations look like. There's some revenue things that are driven around, more casino gambling and sports betting and marijuana, and then there's revenue that's tied into increasing income. So we don't know what the final result is going to be there. That's the other way the budget may hit us, and so we're just kind of waiting the next couple of weeks if the budget's on time. We're nearly on time before we know exactly what the impacts are. But we're hopeful that the federal plan has made a big difference.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have other questions for the County Executive?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the Sustainability Conference that's coming up in the beginning of April.
Yeah. Pete McCart, who is our Director of Sustainability, has really done a terrific job. I know, Nicole, you've interacted with him. He has scheduled for April 1st, which I guess is Thursday morning, a week from this Thursday, a, an environment, I'll be general in the topic, Environmental Conference, that's really meant to attract members of local environmental committees, CAC boards and things of that nature, to talk about a range of different issues, both in, in general session and in breakout. And, you know, a lot of it is, is idea sharing. I think, you know, each different community has their own priorities that they've made, and when Community A starts to talk to Community B, they pick up an idea that comes from Community B, and then the reverse happens as well. And so we want to try to jumpstart that process at this conference as well. We know that, that the initiatives that the county has taken, and they're by no means the universal list of things that we ought to do, but conversion of our bus fleet, conversion of our auto fleet from diesel or regular gasoline to hybrid or, or electric, the work that we've done to try to reduce with you, boot scrap recycling, take that out of the waste stream and don't dispose of it at Charles Point and compost it for the benefit that that has, both financially as well as environmentally, the planting Westchester initiative, all these are things that they're going to go over in this event, and then also the local initiatives. And I don't quite know how he's got the agenda planned and to the nth degree, but a lot of communities have discussions about leaf blower laws. And so this may be a forum for, since communities regulate it, the county does not, this, this may serve as a forum to discuss that as, as a standalone issue. And there are other issues like that that will come up. But I think, you know, we've done this now with chambers of commerce, as we've done this now with faith-based leadership groups. We're viewing the county as not, not the superior government to the local governments, but as the oldest sibling of all the local governments, the biggest sibling. And so we convene the family. We can't give anybody orders, but we can bring us together, and then out of that information sharing, Nicole, hopefully individuals, you know, find ways to improve what they're doing.
I think that's a terrific idea. I just want to say I'm really impressed by your, the level of your dedication and your involvement. It's, it's a real, it's really significant for us that you show up as often as you do at our meetings and, and check in with us. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
I appreciate that very much. As Peter said, there are 45 communities around the county. I was once a councilman, was equivalent to a trustee in one of them, and, you know, I never thought I'd be County Executive, but I always thought that if I did have authority at a higher level, I'd want to have a different relationship with local governments, not one where, you know, I'm, I'm the big strong guy and, you know, we tell you what to do. So hopefully, we're able to do that and be partners, work together, and, and as well, I know you're a nonpartisan board, but even in those worlds where we have the two-party system in place, to work across the party lines and find common ground. It may be hard to find in Washington, but I think it can be found here in White Plains and locally. So we're trying for that. That's our aspiration.
Well, that message was not only an important message, but it was seen where the rubber meets the road this entire year, as folks on both sides of the aisle or wherever they sat all came together under your leadership as we've grappled with the challenges of COVID. So I want to thank you for that. Thank you for your visit. So I'll, I'll leave you with this plea, and that is, the County Center is serving a very high purpose, and it should continue to do so as long as is needed, but I will feel as though maybe the world has righted itself when I'm back in the front row of the balcony in my Westchester Knicks seats. So can you, can you predict what are my chances?
To be honest with you, if the Knicks season is usually a summer season that comes after the professional season ends, is that usually the time?
They normally start in November and end in March, so it doesn't seem too promising for November, right?
Yeah, I would, I would say it doesn't look promising right now. I don't think we'll be through with the virus vaccinations, but look, I didn't think the Knicks were going to, the, the New York Knicks were going to be very good this year. All of a sudden, they're playing decent basketball, so. But I will promise you this, if, if, when they do have the first game, I'll sit in that seat with you. Hopefully, we won't have to be socially distanced. I'll buy the first round. How about that?
I will look forward to that. We'll make good on that deal.
You got a deal. And you got witnesses too to the deal, so.
All right, yeah. Well, it's on tape.
That's true.
Thank you, County Executive George Latimer. Much appreciated.
Thank you, friends. Have a nice day. Nice night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let me return then to a few announcements I had. I'm going to share my screen. There we go. Further to what the County Executive just said, right, this is westchestergov.com. Right at the top, the Westchester County COVID-19 dashboard. Go to the dashboard. I've shown you this before, but it's worth a visit on a regular basis. Here are all the numbers throughout Westchester, and in the left-hand column, tabs at the bottom for current active cases, new cases and cumulative. So scroll down to Pleasantville, we're currently at 26 active cases. Click on new cases. We had five new cases since the most recent report. Cumulative cases, 626 were headed in the direction of 10% of the community having been found COVID positive. And I dare say that these numbers are all an undercount. We're almost certain there are quite a number of cases that never ended up tested and therefore never ended up on this tracker. By any rate, westchestergov.com, a great place for folks who are interested in keeping track of what's going on, not only in our community, but elsewhere and countywide. So as the County Executive just said, the numbers are trending in the right direction, but this is by no means over. We had five new cases as reported in the weekend report this week. Last week, it was nine new cases. So there are plenty of folk in Pleasantville still coming up with new positive cases. And as a result of that, I really encourage everybody to maintain their focus. We're working right now with the school district, Paul Alvarez and Jill Grossman on the school board side have been working on some shared ventures, and we're going to be sharing between the school district and the village, a mask-up campaign to make clear to folks that as the school moves back after the spring break to five-day weekend-person teaching, it's, it's a, a result that so many families have been waiting for. The way to make that work and the way to keep kids in school is to redouble our efforts to avoid the spread. So you'll see some media stuff about that in social media and signs and the like, Mask Up Pleasantville. Also at westchestergov.com, again on the, on the homepage, if you scroll down, you can find a link to the Speak Up Westchester campaign, which was just discussed by the County Executive, that in response to the, some of the bias incidents, the most recent against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, but bias incidents of every kind. Please take a look at hashtag #SpeakUpWestchester and take a look at the work that the county and the, maybe Roca, the District Attorney, has been undertaking. Westchester County Police Officer exams are being offered. That's the first time that civil service exam has been offered in quite a while, hoping that anyone who's interested in being a police officer would take a look at this link and think about sitting for the civil service test, especially interested in increasing diversity, so that in the end, our police forces across the county mirror the diversity of the community itself. And then the last piece that I wanted to bring your attention to is, is a hashtag MyWestchester YouTube video talking about mental health at westchestergov.com and mental health support that's available for Westchester residents. That's obviously a timely subject based in part on the struggles we've all had with COVID, but it's also a timely subject as we talk about police reform. More on that later in our meeting, as we also talk about ways in which incidents that end up as police incidents but really arise out of mental health issues can be better dealt with. So I draw your attention to all of that. In the category of some, some really positive local news, this is the Jacob Burns Film Center website, burnsfilmcenter.org. Two things to report. First is the really exciting news that the theater will be reopening on Friday, April 30th. So that's coming up in a little over a month. There will be capacity regulations. We'll see what they look like at the time that the Burns opens, but they have invested quite a bit of effort in some environmental changes, improving their filter systems and the like, and they will be very, very careful about fulfilling all of the requirements by the state. But as we await that April 30th opening, the Burns, through the generosity of some donors, undertook what you see here on my screen, which is a light show using the facade and the windows of the theater for an installation they call projecting light through darkness, the notion being to take what has been normally a vibrant center of our village life but has been dark for now a year, and to revive it with a light show and in anticipation of the opening of the theater. So I encourage anybody who hasn't seen it to take a visit downtown after dark. I think it, they turn it on around 7:00 PM or thereabouts, and it's a changing thing. So you drive by, you don't get it all unless you have a chance to pull over safely and take a look as it morphs through its various stages. So just a big shout-out to the Burns, not only for the care they have taken in thinking about the reopening and the damage it has done to them, obviously financially to have been closed for so long, but to do the right thing, but also to have brought this piece of light to our downtown, really, really a great result. Our website, pleasantville-NY.gov, a good place for lots of stuff, but I want to remind you you, there's also in the left-hand column, right down here, COVID-19 dashboard. That's another way that you can get to the COVID dashboard I showed you a moment ago. As the county executive just reported, starting tomorrow, folks who are 50 and older are eligible for the vaccine, as well as people who have various other work qualifications or comorbidities. Send everybody to the Am I Eligible site to take a look to see whether you are eligible. If you just search on Am I Eligible New York, it'll bring you right to that site. I'm sure that folks are already aware, it takes some patience to fight your way through it, but I can report, speaking from my own personal experience, if you keep at it, your odds go up quite a bit. And I was successful as soon as I became eligible to, to get my first vaccine. And I really, really encourage everybody to do the same. So as many of you know, we had a village election last week on March 16th. It was an uncontested election, me running for reelection as mayor, David Vincenmore running for reelection as trustee, Joe Stargiati stepping down from his long service as trustee, and Michael Pepperd stepping up as a candidate. So there were three candidates for three seats, and we have the preliminary results, which are as yet unofficial from the county, but it appears that all three of us have been successful in being reelected. We will get the final numbers from the county board of elections, I'm sure, in not too long, and likely there were some write-ins, but there isn't any reason to think at the moment that we haven't won the uncontested seat. So a bunch of things to say, but thank you, David, for running again. Thank you, Michael Pepperd, for stepping up to join this happy band. We really look forward to having you with us. And thank you, Joe, for your service. This is Joe's last regular meeting. Unless he bothers to attend a budget meeting next week, he'd be easily excused for not doing so. But I really do encourage you, Joe, to come back on organization night when Michael Pepperd is sworn in for your seat. But we'll have a few comments to make about the long and good service of Joseph Stargiati.
That'll be the 12th of April, is that right?
What's the date now, Eric Onoreen, for organization night?
April 5th.
And is that at 7:00? We normally do, do I recall?
Yes.
All right. So be there or be square. April 5th at 7:00 PM, we will be renewing the, the vows of me as mayor, as David as trustee, and inviting Michael to, to take the oath of office as trustee. And again, thanking Joe for, for long service. What else did I have to say before I overstay my welcome, which perhaps I already have? Pool season is ramping up, summer camp season is ramping up. We had a conversation in work session with Michael, with Matt Trainer. And so I encourage anybody who's interested in sending their kids to summer camp or joining our pool to take a look at the website, pleasantville-nyc.gov, click on Parks and Rec, where the information will be fed out. If you are not already on our village mailing list, please do so. Left-hand column of pleasantville-nyc.gov, you can subscribe to news and choose the things you want. If you have been a subscriber to a Parks and Rec program in the past, you're already in the list for Parks and Rec. But stay tuned because we do intend to open the pool and we are opening our day camp, albeit with some restrictions that come to us from the county health department to try to do this in a safe manner. Banging continues to go on on the Sawmill Parkway as they hammer pilings into the ground to try to create a stable base for what will be a modestly elevated roadway to solve flooding problems. I know folks in the vicinity of, of that work and even fairly distant from it are suffering from the constant banging of it. It is a state project on a state road and we're not in control of it, but certainly are in conversation with the state about the work that's ongoing. But it will go on for another year, is it, Eric?
Yes, that's correct.
So.
Banging is going to go on for another year?
No, the, the project, the, the banging there projecting about another nine, nine more weeks.
Well, but then when they, when they get that side of it built, they're going to move over and start banging on the side that is currently the drive, the traffic aisle. So it's, it's no fun, but not, not too much we can do about it. So then the last piece I, I wanted to mention to folks, as we touched on with the county executive, is that it appears that the governor and the assembly and the senate in Albany are working their way closer to a resolution of what this year's New York State budget will look like for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the, the infusion of cash from the COVID rescue package that Congress passed has helped New York State as it will help counties, villages, towns and cities quite a bit in, in recovering from the budget gap. So cautiously optimistic that some of the fears we had about what the state budget might look like and how it might have an effect on us are now looking a little more promising. Word was that there is the, the, the general outline of a deal on the legalization of marijuana. The details of that are not yet known, but as I've commented in the past, there is quite a bit of, of reason to think that that will be part of the executive budget that will get passed this year. Its impact on localities is as yet unknown, certainly in the New York Conference of Mayors. We have taken the position that there ought to be a variety of local controls about when, where and how there would be a marijuana producer or, or a distribution facility in a given community, including the right to opt out of sales if a community chose to do so. Whether that will arise or not remains to be seen. Anybody else have announcements or comments to make? All right. With that.
I, I wanted to make one real quick, Peter.
Sure.
Going back to what you said about the vaccines, I wanted to give a shout out to Dineen Carozella-Mancuso. She was on the Facebook group, the 10570 group, and she has helped over 200 people make appointments. So if anyone needs help, she's helping a lot of people. She actually helped my parents get theirs and other relatives that I've had. So she's been really efficient at that. I wanted to give her a shout out because that's, and I think there's a couple other people also in the village of residents that are just helping people. If you contact them, they help you get an appointment. I don't, I guess there's checking, refreshing, but they've helped a lot of people. So I want to give a shout out to her. And if anyone is in need or having a difficulty getting an appointment, to contact somebody or, or contact definitely the village, or we could try to help in some way, but there are people out there in Pleasantville, just village residents who are volunteering to help people sign up, where essentially you just, and like I said, I've myself even got an appointment that way too. You're able to get it through someone just helping you put their information in and get a vaccine shot here in the Westchester. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you for that, Paul. And just to tag on to that, as the county executive also mentioned during his comments, the county has ramped up an effort to try to provide vaccine shots, likely the Johnson and Johnson single dose shot for homebound folks. So we have been, as all communities have, been trying to assemble lists of folks who who might benefit from that, who have a very difficult time getting out or who are compromised in some way that would make it problematic to go out. So I also know that Joni Ehrlich in our senior center has been starting to ramp up with some expanded services and Joni's also a resource for anybody in the senior population to stay connected to their options for vaccines. So. All right. Next item on our agenda is a public comment on the subject of our police reform and reinvention plan. As we have discussed at, at every meeting for quite a few months now, we've had a series of seven Zoom meetings, which would otherwise have been face-to-face, but in the current world are not, on various subjects. And that has coalesced into a five-page document of a series of recommendations. I'll briefly share my screen so you can get a sense of it. This document is available at pleasantville-nyc.gov for anyone who wanted to look at it with more care, but it's been out there for a while and we had a Zoom, our seventh Zoom meeting was specifically to garner comment on this subject. So the recommendations fall into several areas, enhanced training for officers and community outreach, engagement and communication, policies and procedures, and collection and analysis of data. So we, we've had a little bit of commentary and, and a couple of comments that came to us in the last day or so. I want to report what I have said to almost everybody, and that is that this is the end of the beginning, not the beginning of the end. And a couple of folks have expressed an interest in more specificity about some of these recommendations. In, in part, we have left them abroad as a kind of a stake in the ground for what we're trying to achieve and, and as a manifestation of a commitment on the part of the entire board, as well as the police administration and the PBA to continue to grapple with these things. We're going to engage a community committee that we will get going in the next couple of months, effort, making a big effort to make sure that we reach across various constituencies in, in our Pleasantville population. So for those who are looking for more specificity, I want you to know that we'll be working on these things vigorously and kind of using these big picture recommendations as a roadmap for where we're headed. So is there any, anybody who would like to offer a comment at this point? If, if you would like to, you can raise your hand in the participants list, then we will invite you to speak. All right. I see, I see nobody. Any, any member of the board have anything to add at the moment? All right.
People can just, in the current format, people could just speak if they want to, right?
They can, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I think it's important to emphasize that this is a starting point and not an ending point, that we've intentionally created an ongoing discussion on a few different topics with this process that we are going to be working on going forward. So there's some really good stuff in the plan, but I think what will probably ultimately be better is what we arrive at after spending longer working cooperatively on this.
I agree wholeheartedly. All right. As you will see a little later, as we go through our resolutions, resolution number 60 is to ratify that document. And after that, it will be sent to Albany in fulfillment of the requirement the governor set out for every community that has a police department. So any comments from the public on any other subject are welcome if you have them.
This is Tom Murphy. Hi. Hey. I just wanted to follow up. I guess it's been a few weeks now since the last meeting I was here. You were going to provide some information on the lot sizes?
I was, and I am remiss for which I apologize. I just have to fold that data into a readable form for you. So I, I'm making a big Post-it note and sticking it on my keyboard.
Super, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Tom. All right, anybody else? All right. With that, is there a motion to open a public hearing on introductory local law number one of 2021 on the subject of overriding the property tax cap for the village fiscal year 2022?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Welcome to the public hearing. Let me make clear, we do not intend to override the tax cap. This is simply a pro forma process that we're going through, that we've been through every year for some years running. In order to have the option of overriding the tax cap, we have to have a local law in place in advance. And so we decided as a matter of policy to do this annually, so that as we worked our way through the budget process towards approving a draft budget and then approving the final budget by the end of April, we would have the flexibility to override the tax cap if necessary. We have a draft budget in place now that is available on our website. It does not break the tax cap and we do not at the moment anticipate the need to do so. So this, this law simply gives us the option as we go through every year. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Yes, Shane.
Shane McGaffey, 85, Nana Hagan Road, Pleasantville, New York. I was just wondering, in terms of state aid or any federal aid, are you guys getting any that helps to offset potentially the tax?
So, so on the state aid front, it appears that the pittance that we get through the AIM program has, has survived. Last year, as you recall, the governor said, well, it's so small, it wouldn't matter, we'll just get rid of it. On the federal front, it, it is clear that we will get something out of the COVID relief package. Those numbers for villages, as, as George already indicated earlier, haven't been sorted out yet, but we clearly will get money out of it. We don't know how much. Likewise, the school district, right?
Yeah. So are you, in any way, are you sort of trying to guesstimate that in your budget? Or you're just doing your budget like you're not getting any of that money?
Well, as you probably know, the rules of its, of the use of that money are not entirely clear, but what is clear is that it can only be used in certain ways. So when we know how much we're getting, which God willing will be before the budget is finalized by the end of next month, that'll help. But for example, it, it is not simply throw it in the piggy bank and spend it however you want. Fair to say, Eric?
That's right. It, it's also going to be broken up into two installments, but the tentative budget does not presume any of that revenue rate.
So we get part of it this year and part of it next year, which I guess is true for everybody, right? I imagine the school district is in the same circumstance. Is that true, Shane?
Yes, I was just, yeah, I just wanted to know if you had any more guidance than us, and I imagined that you did not.
We do not.
The, the other point I'd like to make is, you know, the community and most people in general look at the tax cap as something cut dry and pretty simple, and often it's called the 2% tax cap or tax levy cap. A lot of people in the community don't understand the difference between a levy and, and the actual total taxes. But I think it would be helpful at some point to maybe do like a little video maybe or, or a little piece at one of the village board meetings where someone takes us through how you actually, you know, implement the cap, because it's an eight-step formula. And I think it would benefit the community to know actually how it works, and it's not as simple as it seems.
That is true. I, I agree with you, we should do that, and I will take that advice. Try to find a way to make it exciting, otherwise we'll be prescribed by local doctors for people with insomnia.
Stop motion animation, something like that.
I'm thinking that now.
So I will say, as I have said in the past, that, you know, you can dig into the history of the tax cap and understand the laudable ideas that were embedded in parts of it, but it is transparently bad long-term public policy to, to give local governments an incentive or disincentive to do the right thing, especially as regards infrastructure improvement. I can tell you that in the Village of Pleasantville, I think we've avoided that reasonably well. Fortunately, we're in a fairly stable financial circumstance, but there are many, many places in New York State for which the tax cap has essentially crimped their public spending on infrastructure renewal and produced a problem that will be a big, big issue in, in years to come, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you recall, back in 2011, the governor made a big point of coupling or pairing the tax cap with mandate relief. And while we did get the tax cap, we never got any mandate.
Preach into the converted. All right. Any other comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing on overriding the tax cap?
So moved.
Second. Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I hope.
Hi.
That's a Zoom. That's a zoom, that's a zoom second, is that what that? Does that count, Noreen, a zoom second, two fingers?
Noreen's saying you can't drop gang signs in a village meeting, please.
All right, is there a motion to open the second public hearing of the evening on the subject of abandoning a section of Congress Street?
No move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome to the public hearing. Eric, you want to explain what's going on, and then we'll invite commentary if there is any?
Sure, so we've discussed this in previous meetings, but there's a hundred feet of roadway, Congress Street and Sorrow's that's been maintained by three adjacent property owners since the early 1900s. Village has never plowed it, maintained it, repaved it. There was an offer of dedication back in 1911 to the village that, according to village records, the village never accepted. At this point, the adjacent property owners would like to formally put into place a final resolution of the matter, which is for the village to essentially abandon Congress Street and amend the village map accordingly. So that's what this public hearing endeavors to do. And then there is a resolution on the board meeting agenda to take that necessary step.
All right, is there any, the board has looked at this in the past in work session on a couple of occasions. We've had advice of counsel, we see no reason for us to assert ownership over a piece of property that we may not even own. Any comment from anyone, including the public?
Yes, I have a comment from the public. Hey, how you doing?
Good, here's your name and address, sir.
Sure, this is Robert Puffamonte, and myself along with Mike Ferrato, who is on the call as well, they can lot on Mountain Road.
Yes.
So we have a few comments on this, let me just pull up my notes real quick. So first and foremost, we don't believe there's a sewer line on that road, is the first problem. So we don't believe that Pleasantville has no interest in that road. We believe it was dedicated as a paper road when the sewer lines were put in place for that purpose. And the maintenance and installation and upgrades of the sewer down to Sorrow's Lane will be the purpose of that road. In addition to that, you know, we reviewed the documentation, and we're a little confused if it's being an unlisted action or if it needs to be adopted as a new town map, which we believe it would need. And it's just the biggest, and then there's also an easement that we have, right, for the property that goes right to that road.
Let me jump in, Rob. So I'm Mike Ferrato, I'm the owner of the property on a mountain road, which is okay, in Mount Pleasant. So it was purchased in 1967 from my grandfather bought it. We have an easement, a sewer easement through the next door neighbor's house that was achieved in 1982. Right? From my research, we believe that the sewers in Pleasantville were installed in probably 1981. Listen, so the question that Rob brought up about the sewer line coming down Congress Street. So the next door neighbor, if you're looking at the property from the left, has a sewer line that is somehow connected to Sorrow's. Town of Mount Pleasant has no permit filed, has no record of it. The town, the village of Pleasantville, has no record of a service line or a trunk line down Congress Street. So my concern is, is that if you guys don't, if you guys give up the declaration of it, that if that service line comes down Congress Street, who is to service that line if there is a concern? Right? My next point is, and all we're looking for, and Rob is the buyer of that property. It's been sold since 2018, 19 of December, and we've been dealing with this matter since then to get a sewer line to the property. We do have permission from the village of Pleasantville to connect to Sorrow's. Mount Pleasant wants permission to come down from our property to Sorrow's. And all we're looking for is an easement to get permission to come through there. Thank you.
So Eric, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe you can fill in the details. This has been looked at pretty exhaustively, and your easement circumstance is not materially affected by whether we take this action or not. Fair to say, Eric?
Yeah, that's correct. And the village attorney is aware of those easements in the library 7791. I'm just looking at a memo from the village attorney. And she says it's up to the owners and their attorneys as to how they choose to amend their deeds. So.
So my understanding was that that driveway, basically a driveway, although it's a question of whether we're giving up our claim to the street. But that driveway services two houses. Is there another lot that is going to be serviced by that driveway?
No, what they're talking about is a sewer easement, not, and there's a grade change as well.
Okay, so.
Someone's raising her hand, you guys can go ahead and unmute yourselves and speak. Oh, sorry, Joe, finish what you're saying, and then let's let.
That's the first question I have, is that road going to service any other property? Or just the two properties that we're talking about?
Just the two properties.
We requested for it to service another property, and we requested permission from Pleasantville to connect to the sewer. And then we requested permission to, from Pleasantville, to give Mount Pleasant permission to run the trunk line up there potentially as well to service the sewer. Before we get into the trunk line, which I'm going to ask about, but my understanding is that there is a, basically a driveway which services one house and the other house.
Right.
Does that driveway access any other property up the hill?
No.
Is that a fair statement? That is true, I apologize, I thought you were talking about sewer servicing, and you're talking about driveway car servicing. No, yes, that's a fair statement. So then, if we accept, if we give up the right to claim the ownership of the street, if we give it up, is that only about, and I would have to read it again now, but are we giving up only the access to the houses, nothing to do with sewers or sewer lines or anything like that?
There is no access, right, correct.
The property was written into a road going up the mountain road.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you well.
Speak maybe a little closer to the speaker on the computer, because we're having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry, can you hear a little better now?
That's better, yeah.
Yeah, the driveway is it was mapped out in 1906. And then I think it was 1911, Congress Street, Avenue was dedicated to the village, along with all the other roads in the area. This piece was never offered to the village because it was never developed, the village wouldn't have taken it. And that's because, second part of it, I understand, the village's line is our back line. The second half of that going up the mountain road is in Mount Pleasant. It's a very, very steep hill, you can't.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen here, I think I've got the right map here. All right?
Okay.
So this is the section we are talking about. Right?
Yeah.
Here's Sorrow's Lane, here's Congress Street, here is the section which, for all appearances, has forever looked like a driveway servicing this house and this house. As soon as you get to the end of this, there's a steep rise, right?
Right, and it's very steep up at Mount Road.
Okay.
And so the line. Now, this property has been never offered or taken or questioned by the village. It has been paved repeatedly, it's maintained, both the roadway, the driveway, and the landscaping is provided by the residents. We and neighbors across the driveway share the property. We maintain it as our own, and the local authorities did the same thing. We had a title search done, and they concluded that it's appropriate to abandon it because we've maintained it, the village has never exercised any rights to taking it, and therefore falls through the adjacent property owners, just as any other property would. So for all intents and purposes, we didn't even have to come to the board, we own it. We'd like to clear it off for everybody involved. We acknowledge, we know there is a house service line receptive. Well, with sewer, receptive waste. I'm married to an engineer. It goes from Sorrow's Lane, faster, from the house up on a mountain road, the Foley's. It goes down to Sorrow's Lane. We know this, repaired on occasion by the Foley's, it's very special, and they take care of that. It's not a problem, it's not an issue, there's nothing to do with it. They use it and maintain it.
This is the Foley's property here.
Yes, yes.
And who owns, and who owns this portion? Congress Street is a paper street, driveway is on Congress Road. Your bottom half, the part that's on the village property, owns Congress Street?
I don't understand which part of Congress you're talking about.
You mean this, Joe?
Yes.
So I mean, we've seen the title searches, and they are inconclusive. The village does not have record of ever accepting dedication of it, but it shows as a paper road.
Okay, so if we give it up, we're not giving it to somebody, we're giving it up.
Correct.
Yes. Well, and if you read the title report that the mayor's called, it concludes that by, I shouldn't say state law, at least by state law, it actually already belongs to the neighbors on either side. So yes.
So I'd like to.
Abandon or any claims to this property. Maybe you don't have the ability to give it to anybody, but you can abandon the claim, at which point it falls through the adjacent property owners.
You could own to the, you could own to the center line of a, say, it's not a paper street, it's a driveway, whatever. But that's neither here nor there, that is somebody else's responsibility. If we give it, if we give it up, give it away, we give our claim away, then whatever happens, happens.
In essence, the village has never, no record of the village ever receiving dedication of it. And in many, many, many decades, it has always functioned as a driveway for these two houses.
Somebody may have an access to, may have the right to build the street, they'd have to come back to us, I suppose, or whatever. But that's a whole different issue, that's completely different. I'd just like to chime in and listen to Miami. Yeah, I mean, I understand what everyone's saying, but the fact that, just, I want to back up to the comment about the sewer line is on there and had issues in the past, and the property owner has dealt with that, that's a branch line to the main. If there's some environmental, I don't want to call it disaster, I don't want to be alarmist, right? But you know, who's to say that that property owner is going to take care of that? And who's to say if the town gives up that right, that wouldn't be the town's responsibility? For a paper road, I believe, is in place for those reasons, for infrastructure improvements and expansion such as sewer lines. So I believe that's why that's there. And just the fact that the property owners have paved it and taken it upon themselves to make it their driveway. Listen, I probably would have done the same thing, right? But just the fact that they've paved it and taken it upon themselves to make it their driveway, I do not think gives them the right to take that away from the town and take away the ability of the town having the right to that for infrastructure reasons and maintenance.
I'm in trouble hearing you, Susan.
You gotta speak more clearly into your microphone.
Okay, closer, okay, you talked about the sewer line earlier, and said one put in, you thought like 1981. Well, we've lived in the house since 1978, I would say no sewer line was put in since 1978. House connection, a four-inch house connection put in for the Foley's house back in so I think that was the 30 to 40. That is just a four-inch house connection that goes down along to that, that's where it enters into Sorrow's Lane. There is no trunk lane, there's no municipal line, there's nothing that goes up from the manhole in the middle of Sorrow's Lane up that paper chain. The house connection is maintained by the homeowner, I mean, it's just like any other one. If my house, if my house, if my house, I would have to fix it.
That's on your yard, that's not on a paper road.
And also your.
That's on your yard, though, that's not on the town paper road, or maybe not a town paper road, but that's one of the debates perhaps.
But, but it's just like if I had to cross somebody else's property, they would be responsible for it, I would be responsible for it. And you know, we've already said, Foley's house connection can be maintained, if we need to clear any needs before, we'll do that. And that will be their responsibility, it's just like any other house connection that has to go across somebody else's yard. It's not, it's not a municipal line, and there was never anything put in there.
So I mean, the advice we have, and our council has looked at this, is that we do not believe that your circumstance here in the town of Mount Pleasant, that this is obviously the border, these properties are not in the village, is materially affected by our saying we do not have a claim to this paper road. At no point is it imaginable that we would turn this into a road. And although in no way wishing to harm anybody's interests, we wouldn't be in a position to make a significant infrastructure improvement for the benefit of houses outside the village. Which, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that in any kind of a, you know, territorial way. It's just the reality of what our responsibilities are and how we can spend public money.
And it's Mike from Mountain Road again. So I'm not arguing what Larry is fighting about owning the property and the title searches and anything like that. What I'm looking for is for you guys to pause the giving up the prop, giving up the road, and us working on an easement through the town, that myself and those technical owners, we're looking just to get an easement to come through there to connect to sewer, right? Because that property is sitting, is squared in, it has no other access.
This is this property? Is this what you own?
I'm over here to the left of Foley.
You're over, below, on the screen, below Foley?
Yes, and I have an easement to come through Foley.
Which came with a property that preexisted, or did you?
My grandfather bought that easement in 82.
Okay.
And that's on file with the Westchester County clerk, right? And I, and that's on file with the Westchester County clerk, right?
And it says sewer easement on Congress.
Water, it says on easement.
Okay, so, but if you have an easement on, on Congress, you have an easement, you, I mean, that-
That's where that, the gray line is, right? So it says to water to sewer, but it doesn't say down Congress.
Okay.
Says to Con-
So what, I'm not arguing with what the owners are saying. All I'm looking for is you not to declare it tonight or declassify or whatever you guys want to use the terminology, that we work to get an easement, right? And in that easement would be to replace, whatever we destroy, we replace. That is what we're looking for. I don't want to, or I don't want to fight with them about ownership because I don't have it right there. I'm not looking to do that. I just looking to get it right to the easement, to come down to that sewer line that Jeff gave us permission to tap into.
Okay, so, but, but you, you need to get an easement from private property owners to do it. Well, right?
Well, we, the town has told us this and the owners have told us this. We're just trying, we're all here as a group. If we could figure out a way to get this solved so everybody's happy, that'd be great.
I'm not, we're not trying to harm your interest, it's just I, I'm, I'm not sure that it's reasonable for us to be a party to the discussion.
Well, yes, it kinda is, because we went, we kinda, we started this in December of 19, right? And Jeff gave us permission in July to use that sewer line, and then I spoke to those owners-
Sewer line on Sarals.
On Sarals, this manhole.
Right.
Right there.
To your being able to get there.
Right, so then I go speak to the homeowners and then this whole process starts, right?
Okay, and, and, and the homeowners don't wish to give you an easement, is that your problem?
They haven't given me a yes or a no. They told me they have no problem with the project, but they don't give me any rights. They're not, they're not giving me permission.
Okay, but I, I mean, it is not really fair to ask us to apply pressure on them. Your negotiation is with the private property owners from whom you need an easement, right? Am I misunderstanding?
But I, I think so a little bit, because isn't the contention that by, by abandoning the road, by default, the ownership goes to those property owners, right? So without Pleasantville abandoning that road, right, then it's still a paper road, potentially under the town's jurisdiction. By abandoning it right now, which I'm not sure, listen, I'm not a lawyer, so I'll be quite frank that I'm not sure, is it standard protocol just to abandon it without resur surveying, without, no, I looked through the documents that are in this meeting, right? And all I see is an environmental impact statement, which some of the answers on there we disagree with, and a few emails, right? So, I mean, I'm, you know, for the purpose of this discussion, listen, I'm not saying anyone's doing anything wrong, please don't mince words, I'm just saying, I, I, I'm not sure if it's standard just to abandon it and it by default go to these property owners without, you know, some more information, some more surveying, um, looking into, um, existing easements that say sewer to, to that street. Um, it just doesn't seem right to do that right now. And listen, it's of course because of our interest, right? We have the interest, quite frankly, we might not care, but because of our interest that by abandoning it, you're by default putting the homeowners in control and forcing us to get an easement from private property owners.
But it's the view of our council that you need to get that easement from private owners no matter what. First off, it isn't by any means clear that we own it.
That, that's true, that's, that's an important point.
It's not, is it clear that you don't own it, though? Dedicated but not accepted? And I, like I said, I mean-
I'm having trouble hearing you, Larry.
Uh, we cannot hear you.
Cannot hear what you're saying.
Larry, you may want to call in.
Get a clearer call, we, we, you're getting garbled.
It's an internet issue, so they should call in.
Can we give them the number?
Yeah, hold on.
Number?
Hold on, I'm looking here.
What does the resolution say?
If you can, you can call in at, you ready, Susan? Six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. And then you need to enter the meeting ID number, which is nine, two, nine, seven, six, five, two, eight, one, oh, three. I can email this and there's a, you want me to email it to you?
Eight, one, oh, three?
Yeah, the, the meeting ID is nine, two, nine, seven, six, five, two, eight, one, oh, three. Got that? So if you call in that number, maybe we'll be able to hear you better, you're having an internet, internet issue.
Very sorry.
That's fine.
Happens.
Can you give the numbers once more, please?
Hold on.
Here, I'm, I'm going to post it in the, uh, in the chat.
Can you see the chat, Susan? Okay.
That's the meeting ID and that's the phone number.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
There you go, okay, good. Thank you.
Very sorry about that, folks.
No, no problem.
Um, I guess my, my point I was saying is if we don't own it, then it can just be dug up by somebody who wants to develop and, and put a, a sewer line down. Now, we know that's not going to happen. It's because we will prevail, I believe. Uh, and I say prevail, only because we're being threatened here at this moment, but we have no intention of, uh, denying an, a, uh, an easement. Uh, we've not been proposed, we have not had one proposed to us. Other neighbors have, but we, we haven't had a, uh, a, a, an easement request, uh, to, to approve or disapprove. So, uh, I think this is the wrong forum to, to try and make that case.
The easement, sorry, interrupted, but you're done. The easement request has not gone to the property owners yet because it wasn't proven that they own it, nor is it proven that the town owned it. We've still been going through that process and that's why we have not gone to the property. We have gone to the town of Mount Pleasant as well as the village of Pleasantville at this point, which is a stage we are in. Um, we have a few avenues we've left off, we have permission to connect from Pleasantville on Sarals, right? Also, I just wanted to read out the easement because I know you're saying the village lawyers have kind of looked into everything and, and I, I believe you, but, you know, just this language right here on the easement for the property I wrote, "The purpose of this said easement shall be for the placing and maintenance of a sewer line from the premises to," uh, blah, uh, the second part through the premise of the party, oh no, it's a long line, sorry. Uh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Just a point to make, the easement is valid regardless, the easement remains.
If, if you have an easement, nothing that we're proposing to do affects that in any way.
But the easement says onto Congress Street, that's the problem, onto Congress Street. So now we're being, Congress Street was in that easement, a paper road, maybe it was assumed, maybe it was an oversight, or maybe it was believed to be owned by the town. Now, by abandoning it, by admission of, of this meeting, it goes to the property owners by default. So now, an additional easement would have to be, be, um, granted by property owners, which is what, um, we're trying to avoid, which we, I, I don't think that was fully looked into.
It is hard to argue that the village of Pleasantville would have, uh, an interest in this piece of property. I understand your problem, I don't blame you for feeling the way you feel, but the properties you're talking about are in the town of Mount Pleasant. We're talking here about a piece of property that the village does not clearly own and, and doesn't want. You're asking us to want it on the, on behalf of, of a property e- outside the village. Am I right?
Mayor, can, can, can you put up the, uh, Mr. Lee again?
Yeah, hold on. There you go.
So if you built a house, would you access Mountain Road?
The house you're talking about building is down here, right?
Yeah.
Sir, Mountain Road does not have a sewer line.
But, but would you access Mountain Road?
Yes.
Okay, there's no sewer line on Mountain Road.
No, sir.
Where, where do all the houses on the other side of Mountain Road?
I believe it comes down Congress Street.
No, no, the sewer line for, uh, the, the property to the north, well, the upper left corner, that goes down the back of those properties down towards, um, Congress. Down towards Crawford. That, that, that was, that house was built, um, I don't know, eighties, late eighties. Uh, they talked about coming over to Congress, they did not. They have a sewer line that goes down through their back and goes down towards Crawford and connects in down there.
Okay, it's back this way?
Uh, no, straight, kind of up, goes up off the map, straight up.
Right.
Yep, that way.
And that's in the town, and that's in the town of Mount Pleasant.
Right, here's the, here's the town, village-town border.
Right.
I mean, they have, they, they may have a right, or not, I don't know, whether they have a right to force you, for example, to put in a sewer. I don't know, they, they, they may have a right to put in a sewer, but right now, we're giving up, we are giving up the right of access, that's what we're giving up. And by the way, we don't even have it, we don't even have it yet. I mean, it's, it's not even here. We're just giving it up because we don't want it.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, I mean, there, there isn't a public purpose for the village of Pleasantville. And indeed, given the un, the, the, the clarity we now have, that we never accepted it in 1911 or whatever it was, and that for the past hundred years, it has functioned as a driveway to two houses, feels like a com- pretty compelling argument that we should say, hey, understand that there are other issues, but those are private property owner issues.
Okay, I guess I just have one to say one final thing, I hear what everyone's saying. I guess my final thing was, this is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
I, I think it's been the documents that were provided in the public hearing, you know, there's no survey, a lot of these documents were not provided here. I think some valid arguments were brought up, maybe between me and Mike, whether you agree on that or not. I, I would say at the very least, until the document from the lawyer, that the easement we have was looked into, that the sewer lines that are existing on that road currently for town maintenance, uh, purposes are looked into, until some of those things are looked into and presented at another public hearing, that we would ask that it's at least continued at this point.
So, I mean, th- this matter has been on our agenda several times over the last couple of months.
This is not the first public hearing about it?
Well, the public hearing is required for us to take this action, but it has been on our agenda several times, so.
And, and, and a title search was done of that whole, of Congress Street, both the town and the village, and they did look at all the adjacent properties and they did acknowledge the fact there's the easement given across Foley's backyard, but, um, they're the ones who came up with all the, the information regarding-
None of that's been provided for this public hearing.
Again, it's, the, the private easements are, aren't our business. If, if private property owners have private easements on somebody else's property, that's between those two owners. It's not, it's not our right nor our responsibility to intercede. If you have a valid easement, you still have it. If you don't have a valid easement and you want one, you'd have to negotiate it with the people who would have to give it to you.
And, uh, uh, Robert, I know the village attorney spoke to one of the attorneys that, that I think represented you, your property or, or Mike's, but, uh, provided all of that, that documentation as well.
Yes, Eric, that's, my attorney did speak with, uh, the town attorney. And I, like I said, I'm not arguing that, right? But Larry and I will speak later, I've, I've called him twice on this matter, one time we've talked, the other time he hasn't called me back, but we're gonna, we'll work this out.
I mean, the fact that the easement we have says onto Congress Street, which is in the village of Pleasantville, and that, the fact that that's, uh, feel like is being overlooked, I, I think is an oversight here before you abandon it and give those rights now to a private property owner.
Are, are you, are you suggesting that, that we should announce to these people that, that this is a road and we're taking responsibility for it and put in a sewer for you?
Well, the village would never put in the sewer, the village would give, uh, Mount Pleasant the permission to put in the sewer and then the contractor would put it in and turn it over, but that's, um, not what I'm suggesting, I'm just suggesting that I don't believe everything was, listen, maybe it was with the lawyers, I wouldn't have bothered, I said I'm not a lawyer, but, you know, this public hearing, the documentation that we saw, it didn't seem like the language that says on, the sewer line onto Congress Street, as well as the existing sewer lines that are onto Congress Street, were considered before abandoning, um, your, the village's interest on this road and giving that right and that interest to private property owners, that, that's all I'm saying.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further comment from a member of the public or a member of the board before we close the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, okay, um, all right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Almost.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. All right, to the resolutions, uh, let me share my screen again. Uh, resolution number forty-seven, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrators to sign letter of engagement, be it March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, with Danziger Markoff. Uh, LLP for G A S B, number seventy-five, Actorial Services for the following village fiscal years, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, full, three thousand five hundred fifty, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, mid-cycle, one thousand seven hundred seventy-five, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, full, three thousand six hundred fifty. The attachments and descriptions of this are attached to this, um, agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, so this, uh, Danziger Markoff, uh, does the analysis to assess the, the future, uh, liability for post-retirement benefits, am I right, Eric?
That's right, the depressing data.
That's right. That, that, a, a few years back was, was, uh, established by the General Accounting Standards Board, uh, as a required element of the annual financial statements of all municipalities. And, uh, Danziger Markoff has done this for us some years running. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I approve forty-eight, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, and the minutes and the Zoom transcript are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
As is always the case, if you go into Novus Agenda, which you can get to, uh, from the meeting list at Pleasantville-NY.gov, all of these blue items are, uh, clickable links and you can read the minutes in exhaustive detail if you care to do so. Comments or corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Trustee Stargiati, one of his last few resolutions prior to his retirement.
Last few. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Holy Innocence Parish for the Village Games of Chance license for calendar year two thousand twenty-one at a fee of seventy-five dollars for the purpose of conducting raffles.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Good luck, everybody. David, number fifty.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one, effective December thirtieth, two thousand twenty, as listed below. A debit of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents from the revenue account forty-four oh one, Pleasantville DFC, Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Revenue. A corresponding debit of five hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-four cents from a four oh five oh four oh three DFC, Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Conferences, debit of two hundred and thirty-three dollars and nineteen to a four oh five oh four oh six DFC, Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Supplies, debit of twenty-eight oh two forty-five to expenditure account, a four oh five oh four oh one DFC, Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Miscellaneous, debit of nine thousand one hundred and eighty-eight and eleven to a four oh five oh four two five DFC, Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community OS Expense.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are we scared you're away yet, Pepperd, huh?
Not too late.
You guys have a lot of stamina. These are marathons.
Yeah.
We're willing to have a developer on every call for the next six months.
So just to remind folks, Pleasantville Strong is a program for which the village is the fiscal agent, but the monies all come from a federal grant, and this is a series of housekeeping accounting measures. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Fifty-one, back to Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments to fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, as listed below. Increased revenue and expense, general fund, effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Revenue. We have zero dollars for drug-free community part-time expense, and then eight thousand three hundred for the drug-free community conferences, ten thousand for the supplies, seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six for the miscellaneous, ninety-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four for ONS expense, nothing for Social Security, and nothing for Medicare.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the recognition of the grant that comes in the year, in the year and the distribution of it to the various purposes.
That's right. Grant year five was the extension that the program received. And then this resolution recognizes the full grant for grant year six.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Fifty-two, Nicole. See, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, it gets fun, right?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending two thousand twenty-one, as listed below. Budget transfers in the general fund, seven hundred dollars from contingent to finance full-time, three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars from contingent to administration full-time. Budget transfers in the water fund, three thousand one hundred dollars from contingent to water admin full-time, three thousand from contingent to water transmission overtime. The kids are descending. All right, appropriate fund balance, general fund, twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
It's the refuse fund.
I'm sorry, the refuse fund?
Yeah.
Why am I, oh, I skipped the refuse fund. I'm sorry. Six hundred from contingent to refuse full-time. Appropriate fund balance in the general fund, twelve thousand five hundred dollars transferred to capital for PPD facility improvements, flooring and repairs. Eighty-five thousand transferred to capital for a DPW truck number eighteen. Increased revenue and expenses in the capital fund, twelve thousand five hundred dollars inter-fund transfer from general fund for police facility improvements, flooring and repairs, eighty-five thousand inter-fund transfer from general fund for the DPW truck number eighteen, forty thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. State aid chips funding for street resurfacing, seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-six cent state aid pave New York funding also for street resurfacing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Stargiati.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, for fiscal year ending two thousand twenty-one, covering checks number nine nine seven eight oh to nine nine eight five oh from the general fund, two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty cents. From the water fund, eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-two cents. From the refuse fund, thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty cents. From the trust fund, two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, for a total of two hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents. And the payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the payment of claims? All in favor? Aye, motion approved. David.
Oh, thank you, Peter. Joe, you sure you don't want to read this one for your last meeting?
No, thank you.
I do think you should read it in its entirety.
Whereas the Village Board of Trustees desires to amend the official map of the Village of Pleasantville pursuant to New York State Village Law, section six, six fourteen, and seven, seventy-four, to remove, abandon, and discontinue portion of Congress Street located within the boundaries of the Village of Pleasantville between Sarls Lane and Mountain Road, located between tax lots known and designated on the tax map of the Village of Pleasantville as section one oh six point five, block one, slot four and five, and shown on the official map of the Village of Pleasantville but was never developed or used a public way. And whereas Congress Street was originally shown and designated on a map entitled Map of Section Number Two of Pleasantville Heights, Town of Mount Pleasant, made by John M. Farley, filed in the Westchester County Clerk's Office on June nineteenth, nineteen oh six, as filed map sixteen thirty-three. Whereas the village records confirm that the village has not heretofore accepted dedication of the portion of Congress Street located within the boundaries of the Village of Pleasantville between Sarls Lane and Mountain Road. And whereas the village received a request from Larry Fastnack, and I apologize if I pronounce that wrong, property owner of ninety-eight Sarls Lane, tax lot one oh six point five dash one dash four, and John Tobin Jr., owner of one oh eight Sarls Lane, tax lot one oh six point five dash one dash five, to abandon the portion of Congress Street located in between their premises. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees referred the matter to the Planning Commission for a report and recommendation. And whereas the Planning Commission issued favorable comments to the Village Board of Trustees on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees notified the Town of Mount Pleasant of the public hearing pursuant to a Westchester County Administrative Code two seventy-seven dash seven one. And whereas a duly noticed public hearing was held on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. And whereas due to public health and safety concerns related to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one public hearing was held by a video conference in accordance with the requirements of the government's executive orders, which suspend the in-person requirements of the New York State Open Meetings Law and provide alternative means by which to conduct public hearings. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, in accordance with Article Eight of the State Environmental Conservation Law and six NYCRR, Part Six Seventeen, and upon review of the EAF and all other application materials that were prepared for this action, hereby adopts the attached negative declaration, ending the State Environmental Quality Review Process, SECR. Be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby finds that the portion of Congress Street located between the tax lots known and designated on the tax map of the village in Pleasantville as section one oh six point five, block one, slots four and five, is useless as a right-of-way to the general public. The only properties impacted by the de-mapping of this portion of Congress Street are the adjacent property owners requesting the property be de-mapped. Village Board of Trustees also finds that the de-mapping does not impair access or otherwise affect the orderly planning and development of any property in the neighborhood. Be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees is familiar with the paper street known as Congress Street, and after hearing from the public staff and the planning board and reviewing all relative materials, the Village Board of Trustees hereby amends the official map of the Village of Pleasantville pursuant to the New York State Village Law, six, six fourteen, and seven, seventy-two four, to remove, abandon, and discontinue the portion of Congress Street located within the boundaries of the Village of Pleasantville between the Sarls Lane and Mountain Road, located between tax lots known as section one oh six point five, block one, lots four and five. Be further resolved that the village hereby relinquishes its rights, if any, to accept dedication of the portion of Congress Street as described above. Be it further resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the execution of a certificate of abandonment in the village clerk's office, which will contain a written description of the abandoned portion of Congress Street. There are a couple of misspellings in this. In the be it further resolved, further is misspelled. That's in the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eighth paragraph. And I'd ask that that be amended. Whereas in the fourth paragraph is just where, so I'd ask that be amended. And I felt like there was one more, but I don't see it.
Is there a second as read and then amended?
Second, read and amended.
Comments or questions?
Mayor, I just, and members of the board, I just want to make it clear. This one paragraph, it's that the Village Board of Trustees also finds de-mapping does not impair access or otherwise affect the orderly planning and development of any property in the neighborhood. I see no reason not to vote yes on this.
Any further kind? So given the possibility of disagreement about this, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Paul? Your vote?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
I vote aye. Resolution passes five to zero. Number fifty-five, back to Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a village administrator to sign the right-of-way agreement with Lighthouse Pleasantville LLC to locate a Con Edison transformer in the village right-of-way at fifty-two Dupuis Street. Attachments of this license agreement are here.
Is there a second?
Second. I'm just gonna say, if you're not on the village board, maybe mute yourself because we're getting some feedback for some reason.
All right, was there a second on number fifty-five?
Second.
Okay, this is a matter we discussed in work session the previous meeting. Con Edison needs to provide a transformer that would be necessary to provide electricity to fifty-two Dupuis Street. Comments or questions?
Mayor, this provides for this transformer to be on the village property, the village right-of-way. I see no reason to do it, so I'm just gonna vote no.
Okay, you had indicated that in the work session. I intend to vote yes, and the reason I intend to vote yes is that the vast majority of electrical infrastructure is in the village right-of-way. I don't know we would deprive this developer of that same right. Any other comments?
I should mention, the building inspector, Robert Hughes, wanted to point out that the wires have to be run underground, which necessitates the existence of this transformer.
Which ultimately is a positive step as compared to telephone poles and aerials, right?
Right.
All right, further comments or questions? All in favor?
I didn't hear a second.
Oh, sorry. Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Number fifty-six, where were we? Whose is it? Whose turn is it?
I can't remember either.
Nicole, Paul did that last, right?
Yeah, I did the last.
All right, now we're to Nicole.
No children wrestling dogs this time. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the license agreement with Pleasantville Lofts LLC for placement and operation of a crane for the construction project at Seventy Memorial Plaza through September first, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, this is a matter we had discussion about in work session. Presentation by the building inspector, based on his discussions with the Pleasantville Loft folks. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Joe, number fifty-seven, the penultimate resolution of the Stargiati era.
Whereas the village seeks to create a need-based Pleasantville summer camp scholarship program to enable residents to attend summer camp who may otherwise not be able to afford to do so. And whereas the village intends to approve up to fifteen thousand dollars in support of the program for the two thousand twenty-one summer camp, drawn from June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one through August sixth, two thousand twenty-one, to be broken up into two sessions, three-week, I'm sorry, to broken up into two sessions, three-week sessions. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
What if you amend that to two, three-week sessions?
Two, three-week sessions, yes. Whereas the program would support fifteen village residents for a for a six-week camp program. And whereas families who were approved for free lunch during the two thousand twenty-one, twenty twenty and two thousand twenty-one school year, based on a student household eligibility for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, will be eligible to receive support through the Pleasantville Summer Camp Scholarship Program. And whereas the selection of those who receive support through the Pleasantville Summer Camp Scholarship Program will be based on a randomized lottery system, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the creation of the Pleasantville Summer Camp Scholarship Program with an allocation of fifteen thousand dollars to fund the two thousand twenty-one village summer camp tuition for income-eligible village residents.
Is there a second?
A second.
So this is the result of quite a few discussions we've had over the last several weeks. Comments or questions?
I just want to thank David for spearheading this. I'm glad we're doing this.
Thank you.
Likewise. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. David?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby waives the thirty-day notice requirement for a liquor license for Forty-One Wheeler Avenue LLC, Fat Root, located at Eleven Wheeler Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
We frequently waive the thirty-day notice requirements in the circumstance of this kind. Fat Root seeking to have a liquor license. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Just as a follow-up, liquor licenses are a matter for the state liquor authority, not the locality. So it isn't our decision. We're simply waiving the right to slow it down. Fifty-nine, back to Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with TC Merit's Land Surveyors to perform a topographic survey of Nantahagan Park for a fee of three thousand two hundred and eighty. The survey votes is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, this is related to the pool project and Nantahagan Pond?
Yep, that's right. So this survey would include an area around the pond that extends through the pool property, talking with consultants. We've now narrowed down the field to two consultants.
Talking with consultants, where we've now narrowed down the field to two consultants who both have requested this survey be conducted. So talk to the Superintendent Public Works Village Engineer, Jeff Connam, who agrees with the scale and scope of the survey as a necessary step into the design of the new pool and also just work to Nantahagan Pond to remediate flooding issues.
So this is to understand the lot that they're going to be dealing with, both in terms of the pool and the adjoining areas? Or what are there other issues that they're trying to scope?
So they want to get a feel for the different elevations, different utilities, everything that's out there. The pool is definitely one scope. The other scope is trying to remediate any flooding issues with the pond. So it'll cover, you know, two birds, one stone.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Nicole, you have number sixty.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville has performed a comprehensive review of current police force deployment strategies, policies, procedures and practices. And whereas the village has developed a plan attached hereto to improve such deployment strategies, policies, procedures and practices, the plan. And whereas the village has consulted with stakeholders, including but not limited to membership and leadership of the local police force, members of the community with emphasis in areas with high numbers of police and community interactions, interested nonprofit and faith-based community groups, the local office of the district attorney, the local public defender and local elected officials regarding the plan. And whereas the village has offered the plan in draft form for public comment to all citizens in the locality and prior to adoption of the plan by the local legislative body has considered the comments submitted. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees for the Village of Pleasantville ratifies the police reform and reinvention collaborative plan and authorizes the village mayor to sign the plan certification form.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as I commented at the outset, this is the end of the beginning, not the beginning of the end. And we look forward to making good on some of the recommendations that we can act on immediately. And we also look forward to engaging the community in some of the subject areas that were apparent in the course of our discussion. So thanks to everybody who participated. Thanks to the village board. Thanks to the chief, the lieutenants and the PBA. And thanks most particularly to the dozens of community members who participated. And we look forward to continuing the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right. This is Joe Star Giotti's last resolution as a village board member.
Goodness. Resolved in accordance with Section 5-510 of the New York State Village Law, the Board of Trustees hereby acknowledges receipt of the village fiscal year and 2022 tentative budget from the village administrator, and the budget is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second. We've all seconded Joe Star Giotti's final resolution in his tenure as a...
I should go no on.
Got it.
We can arrange another life-altering event, so you have to stay on the board for another eight months like Steve Lord did.
Thank you.
So let me just comment, anybody who's interested in the tentative budget, which is not the final budget, but I think if history repeats itself, what we end up adopting by the end of April will be very similar to the tentative budget. Is available on our website at plezenville.ny.gov in exhausting detail, including additional detail about salary levels, about our debt service, about the debt schedule and about the complicated calculations that Shane already made reference to that result in the fact that this budget is and will quite certainly remain within the tax cap. So over the next five or six weeks, we will be digging into some further detail. And one week from today, on Monday, the 29th, we have an additional meeting in addition to our usual second and fourth meetings, where Eric Morrissey will present the draft budget. And will the presentation sustain once again Patty Dwyer's animated GIFs?
I think it has to.
I do. I do too. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Sixty-two, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing for the village fiscal year end 2022 tentative budget for April 12th, 2021, 8:00 PM by a teleconference.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is a split arrangement as compared to what we have sometimes done in the past. The official public hearing is on April 12th, but our presentation of the budget detail is next week, March 29th. Almost there. Paul, sixty-three.
Resolve that the Village Board of Trustees for the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the creation of special purpose account CM.0082 Summer Camp Scholarships, where monies donated to the village to fund summer camp scholarships. And be it further resolved that the funds from CM.0082 Summer Camp Scholarships will be utilized to support the income-eligible village resident.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We have made our way to the last of our resolutions. Is there any new business?
I just wanted to make a public apology to say that when looking at the calendar some weeks ago, I mistook the April 5th for being a day on which we had no meeting, because normally we meet the second and fourth Mondays. And I am therefore flying for work. And I'll actually be in a plane at the time the meeting happens. I'm trying to arrange with Peter and the judge, and I'm hoping maybe Shane to be sworn in earlier that day and maybe have it filmed so that it can be played during the meeting. But Joe, I'm going to be really sorry to not say goodbye to you on that day as well. So I want to apologize.
All right. You're welcome to go.
That will keep the...
I wouldn't be able to welcome you in on your very first meeting.
Well, as it develops, of course, in the in the arms-length Zoom world, it's no surprise that you could be sworn in from God knows where, so. All right. Is there any further comment from the public on any subject before we? Shane?
I'll just say that I'm in, David, in terms of if you need something.
Yeah, no, I mean, if I could do it in person, I would do, you know, with masks and everything, that would be great. I'll come downtown somewhere.
I'd be available. Yep.
Okay. Any other comment from anyone? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Jack Tobin. I'm the resident in the other property on the other side of Congress from Larry and Susan Fastknock. I apologize. I didn't get in earlier during the period of public comment. I just wanted to thank the board and the village administrator and attorneys for looking into that matter for us. And thank you for that resolution. And we appreciate all the work that you guys do. And thanks to Joe Star Giotti for his term of service as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate that. All right. There being no further business, is there a motion to go into executive session on that?
Joe wants to say something.
Joe, Joe.
Michael Papard. Michael, you there?
I am here, yes.
Just want to tell you, good luck. Say, no, really. Good luck and use your head and vote your conscience on every issue, how you feel you need to vote, and everybody else. I mean, just, you know, vote the way you need to feel, the way you feel comfortable setting forth your vote. That's all. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that, Joe, but he's trying to set himself up for not speaking at the organization night. And we're going to resist that.
Jackie's thanking you too. Jackie, you can talk. Thanks for all your years of service, Joe. You will be...
Yeah. Hi, Joe. Tony's sitting here too. We just wanted to say thank you. You're the best. And I know you've been doing this a very, very long time.
So Jackie, Jackie, tell him you want to say that formally on Monday, April 5th.
Well, we were just asking that. Tony just said, are we doing anything for him? So that makes...
You don't have to do anything for me, but I'll be there on April 5th, just to hear.
Okay. Yes.
All right. We got it. We got it.
April 5th it is.
We'll have to go into executive session tonight.
Yeah. We'll let you off the hook.
All right.
Let the record show, this Star Giotti has been brow-beaten into coming on Monday, April 5th, which may be, in all these many years, the first time I have successfully brow-beaten him into anything. Take that as a little bit of a badge of honor.
And when we can meet in person, we should have a reunion with Steve as well.
I agree.
In person.
All right.
Thank you to everybody. Paul, David, Nicole, you're the best. Mayor, you are the best. And thank you, Noreen, Eric, Jackie, Shane and Michael. Terrific, terrific board, terrific...
All right. We'll see you again on April 5th, Star Giotti.
That was a terrific dress rehearsal.
Is it dress rehearsal? Thank you. Perfect, Noreen. Is there a motion to go into executive session on a matter of negotiation? Contract negotiation?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night. Thank you, all of you who are still with us. See you one week from today, Monday, March 29th, for the presentation of the tentative budget.
And I emailed everybody the call-in number earlier.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Joe. Thank you.
Hi, Joe.